All right, we call this meeting to order. The regular City of Yuba City Council meeting was slated for 6 o'clock, and we're getting started at approximately 6:05. If we could have a roll call, please.
Mayor Buckland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Councilmember Didball.
Here.
Councilmember Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here.
So, the order of things tonight, we'll have an invocation from one of the priests at the Sikh temple locally, Sahib, yeah, Sahib Singh. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Girl Scout troop 1245. And we'll introduce them as they come up a little bit later. So, if you all stand with me, please. The invocation.
(speaking in Yuba)
Good evening. My name is Hardeep Kaur, and I live in Yuba City. I'm just going to kind of, you can sit down. No more standing.
We, go ahead. We'll re-stand.
I just wanted to explain a little bit about what our priest said. He's from Tiara Buena Temple. So, the word Ardhas, what he did is called the Ardhas. And the word Ardhas means it's a petition. It's a memorial or an address to a superior authority. It is a petition of the soul before, the soul to the supreme lord. To pray to God for interrupted fulfillment of every wish is a custom in Sikhism. It is the hearty prayer which Sikhs individually or in congregation recite morning and evening before launching off and after completion of any tasks. So, the Ardhas is a supplication and a recollection. It is the prayer which Sikhs individually or in a congregation recite morning and evening, and in fact, whenever they perform a religious service and at the beginning and conclusion of family, public, or religious functions. Broadly, Ardhas consists of three parts. It starts with the remembrance of the ten masters and the eternal guru, Siriguru Granthab, which is our holy book, in which resides the spirit of all the ten gurus. The second part is a recital of six deeds of dedication and sacrifice. Thus Ardhas encapsulates the Sikh history but transcending the time and space setting. The third part comprises words improvised to suit any given occasion, such as when you're having a baby, or you're purchasing a house, or those kinds of things. So Ardhas in itself, this is a prayer which is made for and behalf of the whole community. So, the ending of the Ardhas, we say (speaking in Yuba). So that means that we are, we are trying to supplic, we're, the prayer is made for and on behalf of the whole community, seeking the Lord's protection and grace for the entire kalsa, ending with the supplication for universal well-being for all, not just our community, but for all of humanity. So, I just wanted to give you a little explanation of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As, as we approach, item number two will be a portion of this. But as we approach this weekend, which is one of the largest parades and celebrations in the United States for the Sikh community, and certainly one of the largest participant parades in the United States, that will begin on Friday out at the, at the temple, and will culminate with the parade and, and everything. We expect nearly 100,000 people to enter Yuba City and be part of this celebration and, and part of that parade. So, thank you very much for the invocation. We'll all stand again for the Pledge of Allegiance, again, carried or led by troop 1245, the Girl Scouts.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just have to be able to push the button hard enough, I suppose. We're very honored tonight to have Kim Crosby here with us. So, I'm going to have Kim and her family and Keystone come on up. But, so, it will be Kim, her boyfriend Eric, and I'll tell you a little bit about Eric here in a minute, Father Paul, Mom Pauline, brother Darian, and his girlfriend Erin can all come up front with us. First, Kim, I'm going to give you this folder. And this is our proclamation. We have one other item for you that will be presented by others, but this is a proclamation from the City Council in its full explained terms, and I'm going to have you hold that. If you'll hold it a little higher, because I believe it's blocking the bronze medal down below. Kim Crosby, a true hero. She is a 2016 Paralympian bronze medal winner down at the Rio Games. Her, one of her quotes is, "Limited sight, limitless dreams." Whereas Kim Crosby is a native of Yuba City and is the daughter of Paul and Pauline Crosby, Kim is considered legally blind with 2,400 vision. And whereas Kim started in track and field when her brother Darian suggested she join the high school track team after seeing her run the mile in her PE class at River Valley High School, and I also understand from all of that volleyball wasn't good to her, nor was basketball. Whereas Kim ran track at River Valley High School and Chico State, and has been working hard for years to get ready for the worldwide events she is now participating in. And whereas among Kim's accomplishments are winning the 200-meter silver medal and the 100-meter bronze medal at the 2015 World Championship, and the 200-meter gold medal, and the 100-meter silver medal in the 2016 U.S. Paralympic Team Trials. And whereas on September the 11th, 2016, at the 2016 Paralympic Games in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, Yuba City native Kim Crosby clocked a personal best time of 12.24 seconds in the women's 100 T-13 to bring home an Olympic bronze. You can be seated, because we're going to show you that video momentarily. Also, Eric competed, a top-10 finisher in the 100 and 400. Am I correct, Eric?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, down at Rio also. So, he is a high-level competitor also. And, and as part of this, we're going to show the video, which will take about four minutes for them to get to sing. And the hometown crowd went wild.
(speaking in Yuba)
Now, therefore, it would be resolved that I, John Buckland, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of our entire City Council hereby congratulate Kim Crosby, and say that we cannot be more proud of our hometown hero. Serving as a worldwide inspiration of what can be accomplished through hard work, ability, and determination, I hereby urge all residents of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Kim for her outstanding athletic achievement done on this first day of November 2016. Kim. There are others that would like to recognize you. If we can get Representative from Jim Nielsen's office, our Assemblyman James Gallagher to come forward. And anyone else that will be making a presentation, it's, we have brought it up front.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and this, what a proud day, you know? I mean, just to watch this video right here. Kim, we are so proud of you here in Yuba City. But I want you to know, not only is this hometown crowd proud of you, the state of California is proud of you, and they have recognized your accomplishment. And we have a resolution that we wanted to present to you tonight from the California State Senate and the State Assembly, recognizing your, your great achievement. 12.24 seconds, that's smoking. And I ran the 100 in, in high school. I didn't come, you know? I wasn't very good, but you know, you, you know, but anyways, I just recognize that, and you know, amazing to see you compete at that top level. You're an inspiration. I love them, I love your mantra, you know, "Limited sight, limitless dreams." And, you know, what, what a great lesson for everybody, you know, all the young people who are growing up and have dreams of competing at that level. We love to celebrate so many of the great accomplishments of our, of our region and, and the, and the kids in our area, but, you know, the athletic accomplishments, man, are really special. And, and so, to see you have done that and to see you do so well, we're very proud of you. And I just want to present this to you as a, as a token of our appreciation and recognition, and good luck to you with, I know you're just getting started, you know? So, we expect great things out of you in the, in the years to come, and very, very best wishes to you and your family. Eric, it's been a pleasure to meet you today as well, and the family. And hey, family is what makes it all happen, you know? And thank you for your great support of her, and thank you to the Yuba City community who's been supportive of Kim as well, so.
Laura, did you want to have a couple words?
Good evening. On behalf of Senator Nielsen, it really is a privilege to be here with you, your boyfriend, your family, all of you that brought you to this amazing, wonderful moment. We thank you for giving Yuba City this just wonderful accomplishment on your part. And we know that it takes a long, hard work, a lot of practice, and we're just very proud, very happy, very excited, and looking forward to what you do next. Congratulations.
And next, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Larry Munger, along with my, my good friend, the Vice Chair, James Whitaker. I didn't say anything about him.
The doorman. Kim, it's a great honor to be able to present this plaque from the County of Sutter. We're very proud of you, and the whole County of Sutter is behind you and your family. And it takes a lot of family, like I say, to, to your support, because of what you have to do. Like you said, you've had to drop out of Chico for a while, train. You've got three semesters left, and then you'll go back. So, that, that's really great. I mean, you've already, already done a lot. And also, look how good your dog is. She's really representing you, so. I'd like to present you this plaque from the County of Sutter.
There's one other member of her family, and, and I learned tonight that Kim started running when she was a freshman in high school at River Valley. So, if your coach could come down. And I'll let you say a few words if you'd like.
I can't say no, no. I could tell for an hour or more of stories about Kim Crosby. I am a teacher at high school, and I teach my kids. I talk about examples of how a person works, and I have examples of Kim that show how not only an athlete works, but how a person works. As a, as a coach of running and, and track, I've had some great athletes, and as great as they are, they're still better students and they're better people. And Kim is definitely at the top of that, that peak of people. I can talk about these stories, but I think one thing I'll say is that when she was a junior, very quiet person, and we had a team of a lot of senior boys, and in our team, we never elected or chose leaders. I told it, if there, we need leadership, step up and, and be the leader. And the senior boys wouldn't lead the team, so Kim, as a junior, began leading the, the track team. Because she loved that team, she drew people to her, as much as a nerd as she is, she had her Hello Kitty backpack. And unlike trying to be cool, she just was who she, who she is, and that's cool. And people wanted to be around her. In my room, she'd have a, you know, a break and hang out there, and all these kids would come hang out around her. And on that team, she was the leader. Those boys let her lead, and she led, and they followed her. She led the warm-up, she led the team cheer at the beginning of a, of a meet, and got the whole team, you know, involved in the, in the meet. And she was with it for two years. That's the kind of person that she is. As a leader in her team at Chico and track and cross-country in, in our school, and she ran cross-country as well as track, that's the kind of person she is. And she, 12.24 at the 100, let's try to get next four years from now, try it again, all right? We'll see what happens. But this kind of person is a piece of excellence in our town right now, and let's enjoy that, okay? Thank you.
Keystone, do you have anything to say before, before I turn this over to, to your mom? All right, Kim, a few words from you, please.
Oh, man. First, I want to thank everybody, especially my parents, who, and my brother, who pushed me into doing sports. I wouldn't have been here without you and Coach O. Oh, my gosh. I know I wouldn't be here today, I wouldn't be the person that I am, and I'm so glad that I am here. It took a lot of hard work and dedication. It definitely wasn't easy. And sometimes I can tell you, I did want to quit, because it was hard, but I never gave up, and I just kept pushing towards my dreams, you know? Kids in high school, my teammates would say, "Oh, you're going to make it to the Olympics," and I, I told them, "No." And here I am today with a bronze medal, and I can't even believe it. I am so speechless for how that moment felt. It was so emotional, and I, I can't wait to do it again.
We thank you, Eric, certainly your family, Coach, and our community, our school system that provided an opportunity for you to build, to excel and move forward, and to our university system that helped train you and get you on the way, and then also to the Olympic trainers. So, thank you, and thank you for the perseverance of continuing and fulfilling a dream that you've always had. So, thank you once again. If I could have Tej Man and Sahib Singh come up. Towards the center, Tej. Sikh Awareness Month and Apprec, or Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month, November of 2016. Whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world today, and are more than 23 million Sikhs worldwide, and an estimated 250,000 Americans of Sikh origin, comprising nearly 40% of the nation's estimated Sikh population residing in California alone. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, and have distinguished themselves by fostering greater respect among all people of faith and service. And whereas the City of Yuba City has a significant population of Sikhs, and is committed to respecting the heritage and religions of our diverse community. And whereas the Punjab American Heritage Society was founded in 1993 with the purpose of promoting friendship and understanding with other communities, and helping our younger generation getting connected to their roots. The Punjab, the Punjab American Heritage Society is a nonprofit, nonpolitical, and secular organization, and is trying to meet diverse needs of local community. And whereas the City of Yuba City and the Punjab American Heritage Society are committed to educating about the world's religions, the values of religious diversity, tolerance grounded in the First Amendment principles, a culture, cultural, a culture, I'm sorry, of mutual understanding and the reduction of violence. And whereas today, the City of Yuba City seeks to further the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate, appreciate their rich history. the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Buckland, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2016 to be Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month, done on this first day of November 2016. Tej is the president of the Punjab American Heritage Society, so I'll turn the microphone over to you first.
How long do I have?
One minute.
When I was in the city council, I always got accused of taking too long, so I'll make this brief. It's an honor to be back here at the city hall and to represent the Punjab American Heritage Society and the entire Sikh community. It's an honor that the city is recognizing the community for all the great work this community does. This has been a great city, great community, for the Sikh community to flourish, mutually benefiting each other. It's an awesome, awesome community. Thank you.
Vai Guruji Ka Hal Sa, Vai Guruji Ki Fathe. Aj Sikh Community De Samu Paichara, Sikha Paichara Ishtaante Khattho Ya Ha. Ma Guru Maharajji De Hajar Ardas Ben Tiyah Ki Karanga Ek Preston De Naate Ke E Thun Asi Sikha Paichara Te Juba City De Ya Saariya Sangta Jo Hoor Community De Vi Lo Khan Asi Raal Milke E Thun De Saari Raal Milke Pyaar E Thpaag Na City De Kar Jaan Te Jo Sarbat De Pal E Vas Te Asi Jaach Na Kar De Ha Raal Milke Ase Chal Sakhiye Te E Thi Am Chhaan Chanthi Bani Revi. Vai Guruji Ka Hal Sa, Vai Guruji Ki Fathe.
Paiji basically said what was mentioned in the Ardas earlier by Hardeep Kaur, that we pray for having a united community and always asking for the betterment and the good of all humanity. Again, Punjab American Heritage Society, thank you for this, and thank you, the entire community. What a wonderful day. Looking forward to the parade this Sunday. But that's not the only event that's, it's all week, actually, there's events going on even right now, so whenever you have time, please take a moment to visit the Sikh temple.
Lynetta. Lynetta Riley, president of the Yuba City Unified Board, the School District Board. Herb Cooley. Yep, there you are, Herb. Dr. Paul Broughton. John Amaral. Sharman Kobiyashi. Fred Northern. Now our completely honored guest, Nancy Alberg. Wow. Did we ever think this day was going to come? Nancy, it's been a privilege to work with you, but I am going to read this, and hopefully I can keep it together because you have been such an instrumental part to education in our community. Nancy Alberg, the Yuba City Superintendent of Schools from June of 2005 to November of 2016. Whereas Nancy Alberg joined the Yuba City Unified School District in 1983 as a math teacher at Yuba City High School, and whereas Nancy Alberg was appointed as the interim superintendent of schools in June 2005 and was made permanent that November, becoming the first woman to serve in that position. And whereas professional honors include the 2016 Woman of the Year from Congressman John Garamendi, author of Math Stories for Problem Solving Success, contributing editor, CPM Educational Program, contributing author, Transportation Demand Management for the California Departments of Education and Transportation, contributing author and editor, California's Math A, B, and C Administrator, A, B, and C, and Administrator of the Year, Calusa, Sutter, and Yuba Administrators Association. And whereas Nancy's community and professional activities include the California Public Schools Accountability Advisory Committee to the State Board of Education, Association of California School Administrators Commission for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Friday Night Live, Sutter County Children and Families Commission, United Way, Association of California School Administrators. And whereas the mayor and the city council, along with city staff, appreciate having had the benefit of Nancy's leadership, wisdom, and experience serving on the 2008 Yuba City Economic Development Advisory Committee, and appointment to the Yuba City Economic Development Commission in 2012, and the 2016 Summer at City Hall Program. Now therefore it be resolved that I, John Buckland, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate Nancy Alberg for her outstanding contributions to Yuba City, and hereby urge all residents of Yuba City to join us in congratulating Nancy Alberg for her well-deserved retirement, and wish her all the very best in the future, done on this first day of November 2016. Your board insisted on being here for this presentation, and so I will pass the mic to your board president, Lynetta.
On behalf of the board, I want to tell you how difficult it's been to say goodbye to Nancy. She emulates exactly what leadership is about, and she's always said that our community and our education system needs to be a reflection of the children that we serve. She has taught many of us the importance of leadership and the importance of preserving our most natural resource, our children. I think Nancy firmly believes that if we don't raise our children to be leaders, there's plenty out there that will steer them the wrong way. And so we, on behalf of the board, I'd like to tell my friend how much we value your friendship and your leadership, and we love you.
I don't think I can add any words to that because our school system is so much better today because of you and everything that you've done. And I think that it's even, the earlier presentations have been really a testament to what makes this community progress and move forward, and is certainly the foundation that our students are given in the educational system. And you have been an instrumental part of leading that. So thank you, Nancy.
We have a wonderful community, and we've already seen that in the previous presentations of our young athlete with character and determination, and our wonderful diverse community with our Sikh population and our community being honored tonight for just honoring a time in the year when it's time to take time out to remember how great contributions that they have made. And now it's my turn, and I'm honored to be part of our community and to receive this honor from the council. It truly is overwhelming. And Lynetta, thank you for your words. I'm not going to be able to pull this together. I think that the biggest part of what we have done together in education is to be a part of a community who cares about education. And we, I know personally, having been on the Economic Development Committee and Commission thanks to the council, that our community believes that education is part of our future. It's part of our prosperity. It's part of the fabric of the economic future and success of our community. And together, we have to work really hard. They believe in the educational system. We are the only school district in the city, and we are a part of the economic plan for our community as laid out by the council, and that means a lot to the school district. It means that they believe in education, and they believe in our district to help do our part to make education strong and make it an asset to our community. And with that, we couldn't be more proud. We have 13,000 students and spread out all through the county and the city, but most importantly, we have a city council and a diverse community who all believe in our children and what they can do for our future. It's been my honor to serve this district since 1983, and the last 12 years as superintendent, and I can't thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a presentation by Girl Scouts Troop 1245. Alexia Aguilar is a senior at the high school. And so we have, I think, a number of them, and they'll introduce themselves as they proceed with the presentation. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to make a special thanks to Preep for making this happen for us. We are a Girl Scout Troop 1245, and we have, we met each other when we were four years old, and even though we went to different schools and had different activities, we made sure that Girl Scouts was a big part of our life and that we stayed close as a family. Without Girl Scouts, we would not be the people we are today. We've prepared a PowerPoint to show you the different activities we've done the past 13 years. Each slide has a word that we believe describes what Girl Scout means. By the end of the presentation, you'll notice that the first letter of each slide spells out Girl Scouts. Our first slide is giving. Each year, our leader, Ms. Cindy, would find a less fortunate family in need of some assistance to complete their holiday, and would organize a list of presents for each child in the family that we would surprise them with. We would then choose a date to prepare dinner for, to eat with them, and sing Christmas carols, and then give each child their gift. Another thing we love to do during the holidays is visit the fountains. We would make goodie bags filled with fuzzy socks, mittens, and small blankets to keep the residents warm during the winter season. We have always enjoyed going room to room, singing Christmas carols to the residents. We would always be willing to sit in their bed with them or give them a hug if they asked. During the cold winter nights, when churches have opened their facilities for the homeless to sleep, we have taken dinner and served the guests. We also have interacted with the homeless families and helped them set up cots to sleep on during their stay. This has given us a better understanding of their situation.
Our second word is interdependence. We have relied on each other as a family throughout the years of being Girl Scouts together. During our Bronze and Silver Awards, we all worked together to earn these awards and assist each other with anything that we needed. Also, we have done community service projects together to keep, to support the rest of our girls and to support each other, and we try to do every single thing that we can as a team and a family. Our next word is respect. While we were doing our service projects or working on our Silver Awards, we had to ask companies for donations. While doing this, we had to make sure to look the person in the eyes while we were speaking to them, and we would explain where their money would be going and why we needed it. We also had to make sure that when we did get these donations, we were extremely appreciative, and we showed them just how appreciative we were. We also learned our respect at a very young age when we were six years old selling our Girl Scout cookies. We would ask people to buy our Girl Scout cookies, and even while we were being ignored, we would smile and say, thank you. Girl Scouts has taught us all how to be respectful to others and to each other. And with a group of people working together, it wasn't always easy. However, with our parents and leaders, we taught each other how to be respectful in making these decisions as a group.
So the next word we have is learning. Through all of our interest patches, we've learned many different valuable lessons. From the time we were young, we learned that it was really important for us to learn how to do the color guard ceremony. In different workshops, we were able to learn how to do this and also how to retire the flag so we could perform this at different events. Our mothers have been, had a very big impact on our Girl Scouting, but our fathers also felt like it was important for them to be involved. So one of our fathers especially found it important to teach us how to change attire so we never were stuck on the side of the road or struggling with that if we were ever put in that situation. We also learned about each other's different cultures because we all come from different backgrounds, and we felt it was very important for all of us to get a better understanding of each other. We had a potluck, and had each girl bring a meal that they felt that represented their culture, or it was just their favorite. In doing this, we were able to learn more about each other and see the different aspects that made us the people we are today. In doing our interest projects and traveling, we also learned that we had to have good financial budgets, so we would know how to spend our money and make sure that we had the means to be able to spend our money and make sure that we weren't overspending or that we would fundraise enough. Our next slide is social skills. Cookie sales not only helped us learn respect and about finances, we have learned how to have engaging conversations with customers. Ms. Tara, our leader, has required us to learn the skill of how to count back money to our customers. We have been exposed to many different kinds of people through Girl Scouts, and always treat everyone as though they are the President of the United States. We know everyone can benefit our lives in some way, and we appreciate them for that.
Our next slide is community. We attended the Run Dragons Out of Town and helped hand out medals, and we cheered on the runners. We also volunteered at a Walk to End Alzheimer's and gave out balloons for a balloon release with colors describing how Alzheimer's had affected each person. Our last one is a Boy Scout in the community was earning his Eagle Scout, and we helped him with the project by building a new animal habitat and made lunch for all the Boy Scouts that were helping.
Our next one is opportunity. Our first major trip we took was to Disneyland. This trip wasn't just for team bonding, but we were also bridging from Brownies to the junior level. Five years later, we did many fundraisers and were able to visit the East Coast. Even though it was offered to us with our eighth grade class, we chose to share this experience and learn about the different part of the country with our Girl Scouts. Our troop, along with our leaders, were able to experience a once-in-a-lifetime trip that not only built sisterhood, but also allowed us an experience that may never have happened if it weren't for us Girl Scouts. On the next slide, we have a few pictures from our trip, but which one touched us the most was our co-leader, Cindy, set up a meeting with the Capitol, sorry, I'm so sorry, with Congressman Doug Lamoffa. Thank you.
So the next slide is unity. When we were getting our Bronze Award, we all worked together to get that one, but when it was time for us to get our Silver Award, we all had our own projects, and even though we had our own projects, we made sure to help each other. And now each girl is going to describe a little bit of what they did for their project.
So for mine, mine was a Christmas Day. So I went to Terrebonne Elementary School, and I teamed up with one of the teachers there, and she gave me a list of the needy families from Terrebonne and our community. And I did a project that not only gave them food for Christmas dinner, but we provided plays and we provided activities for their Christmas, so it wouldn't be just a regular Christmas. It would be fun, and they got to meet Santa, and we had a bunch of fun activities for them.
My Silver Award was that I donated a room to the Hands of Hope, and this was actually in honor of two of their founders that were my neighbors, and they touched my heart, teaching me how to be part of the person I am today. And they taught me a lot about respecting my elders and respecting people in our community. So they donated a lot of their time to the Hands of Help, and they were super big into donating and helping these homeless people. So I thought that it would be just perfect for me to donate to them a room in this building to help these people read and to encourage these homeless people to be successful and get themselves off the streets and into homes.
For my Silver Award, me and my, one of our fellow Girl Scout sisters that isn't here with us today, we made buddy bags. So we basically got bags, and we filled them with blankets, colored pencils, coloring books, stuffed animals, and a positive note. And they were for them when they got taken out of their homes from Child Protective Services or the domestic abuse from their parents. And we just teamed up with the Yuba City Police, and they just carried them in the back of their trunk. So whenever they went to their, the children's homes, when they took them out, they just handed them one of them, and just to comfort them when they're in crisis.
For my Gold Award, along with my sister and another Girl Scout that could not be here tonight, we made a shadow box to have a Pet of the Month at the animal shelter, along with making 150 goodie bags, and we did the pets' dirty laundry for two weekends.
One of our Girl Scout sisters that wasn't able to be here tonight, we still wanted to talk about what she did at her elementary school. She noticed that the garden boxes that she had there were not sufficient enough for the students to be able to plant the flowers, and their science teacher had them there for the students to be able to observe the plants in their science class. And so she made different garden boxes and helped the kids with little name tags, so they knew which box was theirs. And so when they grew their plants, they could see the different things and do experiments with them for their science class.
Our last slide is Together Forever. The best thing about Girl Scouts for us is a family that we have gained. These girls are more than friends, they are our family. And although this next year, we may be all going our separate ways, either another state or somewhere else in California, we know that if we ever need someone to be there, that these girls will be there for us for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
And I'd like to recognize their Girl Scout leaders, Terrell and Crowe, and Cindy Smoot, both that are here. So. You have, you have helped develop some remarkable young ladies in our community, and thank you for the leadership that you've provided them. Remarkable young ladies. So thank you. It's amazing. We've gone nearly an hour and haven't spent a dime of taxpayers' money on an agenda. So we'll continue on. Item number five, Chamber of Commerce report on tourism. And this will be a presentation by Brianna Struckmeyer, Director of Visitor Services from the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. Brianna?
Three minutes. Well, if anybody was here for my last presentation, you all know I can talk pretty darn fast, so we'll make it quick. Two things that I want to talk about today are the California Swan Festival, which is now in its fourth year, as well as the progress that we've made so far on the Yuba Sutter Tourism Business Improvement District. So we'll jump right into Swan Festival. To talk a little bit about the Swan Festival, how it began, what it is, the, in 2013, the California Swan Festival was born from an idea, a co-partnership effort between the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. The purpose, the purpose of the California Swan Festival is to bring it, was to bring a unique outdoor recreation event to the Yuba Sutter region as a way to promote the Pacific Flyway and bring in visitors from all over the U.S. The California Swan Festival is now in its fourth year. The Swan Festival is an annual event that celebrates the abundant local and migratory waterfowl of the northern Sacramento Valley. The Sacramento Valley lies on the southerly end of the Pacific Flyway migratory route and is one of the most prominent wintering sites for waterfowl in the entire world. Waterfowl migrate to the Sacramento Valley by the millions from as far away as Alaska, Canada, and Siberia. Sacramento Valley habitat supports approximately 44% of wintering waterfowl using the Pacific Flyway. This attracts more than 1.5 million ducks and 750,000 geese to its seasonal marshes. This three-day event offers workshops, presentations, guided tours, and educational programs catering to bird watchers and nature enthusiasts of all ages and levels of interest. The California Swan Festival is timed to honor the return of the tundra swans to their winter home. Arriving in the tens of thousands and in close-knit family groups, they make a spectacular show for bird watchers and photographers. Parking and entry to the Swan Festival Expo are free, as are a wide range of workshops and presentations on wildlife education, natural sciences, ecosystems management, and photography. The 2016 California Swan Festival, I'm going to talk a little bit just about our committee. Our committee is made up of members of our local area, myself, our CEO Ricky Schaefer at the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, as well as some graphic designers, marketers. And then we do bring in help from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and as well as contracted service providers to organize all of our tours. Every year, we run 30 to 40, well, now we run about 30 to 40 professionally-guided birding tours during the Swan Festival. So we rely on these people to help us bring in these professionals from all over, so that we can really have a unique event. Swan Festival growth. So this festival started many years ago, well, not many years ago, just a few years ago. And we just want to look at this growth chart. So in 2014, you can see in gray on the far left, we've got tours. So every year, we try to grow our tours very slowly, so that it's manageable. But the numbers to look at are the number of registrants. So this is the number of registrants specifically just for our guided tours. It's the only way for us to track and measure the number of people coming in. And as you'll see, obviously, 2014 over 2015, our growth cycle has been wonderful. In green, that's the number of out-of-town visitors. So these are not just, we actually separate those that come from more than an hour distance away. So not Chico, not Sacramento, but farther than that, those visitors that we expect to spend at least one night and most, most of the time, two nights in the Yuba Sutter area during their stay. In 2016, these are our projected numbers. So already looking at this and where we were at this time last year, we more than expect to, to increase the numbers over last year for both visitors as well as registrants. So it's really our visitor numbers that we look at each year for success, and this year, we're doing quite well. Our projected overnight stays. So in 2014, this is 2014, 2015, and then to date in 2016. So we break down the number of out-of-town visitors. We break down the number from those out-of-town visitors more than an hour away, and then we add in our exhibitors and tour guides that are staying overnight, and we project out the room nights that they'll be spending here. So, so far for 2016, we are on track to exceed last year's numbers. A map of the visitors that attend the festival. So this is just from what we've received so far this year. We still have two weeks until the event actually begins, which is most of our crunch time. So the majority of our numbers actually come in the last three weeks, and some people even fulfill some of our tours on, during the event themselves. But if you just take a look at where these people are coming from, as far away, obviously, the entire state of California, all the way down to San Diego, we've got people coming from Oregon, we have people coming from Nevada, and then this year, we have quite a few people coming from Minnesota, actually, which is wonderful. So. New for 2016, every year, we try to add something new. We try to grow the festival. We look at our marketing strategy. We see what's working, and we see what groups would be beneficial to bring into the Yuba Sutter region. New for 2016, we've added some sunset tours. So if you pay attention to what's happening with social media and how it's evolving, especially in the world of marketing, visual marketing is everything right now. And the Yuba Sutter area is very unique in that our natural landscape is one of the most enticing things for people to come visit our area. So by showing, showcasing what people are going to see when they come, it's a great way to get them here, and also a wonderful way for us to share how others participate in the festival by sharing their own images. So our sunset tours are a way for us to feature the wildlife with a stunning background for photographers, whether they're using fancy cameras or just iPhones. Marketing focus on families and children. So we've looked at our event versus many other wildlife events that happen in the state of California, and we found that our niche for the Swan Festival is really on families and kids. So bird watchers of all ages, but we really do an exceptional job for our families and kids. We, this year, we're offering a coloring contest, which is already out in the paper right now. It is open to all ages, so I highly suggest that you fill that out. It's actually, it's quite a fun piece. We offer live animal presentations. These are all free. We promote through our local schools. This year, we'll be featuring the Junior Duck Stamp Display, which travels the state of California and is a way for us to showcase what kids are doing with education through the U.S. Department of Fish and Wildlife, and then fun things like face painting crafts, kids' education, kids' birding tours, and things like that. This year, on Friday, we've added an art and film reception. So we're partnering with the Yuba Sutter Arts Council and offering an open house where people can come and check out what's going to be offered at the festival this year, as well as check out a wildlife film documentary and view some local wildlife art. Okay, that's it on Swan Festival. Now I'm going to talk just briefly about the Yuba Sutter Tourism Business Improvement District and where we're at with things. I'm going to go over our timeline, or the jurisdiction support for this, and the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association formation. So where we're at with timeline, as you can see, the, and you all have a copy of this, as you can see, this is what we've been able to accomplish so far with what's checked off. We've been able to push our timeline, kind of condense our timeline into a manageable timeframe for what we're looking at. So right now, what's really exciting is actually, on last Friday, we completed our Management District Plan, which means that we get to begin our petition drive. So this is the time when we go out and talk to all the lodging owners and get their support, their signature support for moving forward with this effort. So it's very exciting that we're able to start doing this, and this is kind of where, where the action happens and where we make everything successful. So as of right now, there is a letter that has gone out, an email letter, to our jurisdiction leaders to bring them together and go over this plan to make sure that we have support at the administration level, and, and we can answer any questions prior to coming before these city councils and supervisors. Follow-up has already begun. Thank you to Steve for your help with this and bringing all these people together, so we can make sure that this is a united effort moving forward. This is a regional opportunity, and it's something we want to make sure that everyone is on the same page with as we move forward. So the next step is to present to the administrators and the city managers, and this will happen sometime in November, hopefully in the next two weeks. Next steps, in November, we will submit the petitions totaling over 50% of assessment to the City of Yuba City. In December, the, we will present to the city council, along with Civitas, our representative Nicole Farley, for an initial hearing where we will adopt the resolution of intention and the resolutions requesting consent. A mailed notice of public meeting and hearing will go out. In January, the city council and board of supervisors, we will go before each of them to adopt a resolution granting consent from each city council and board of supervisors. In January, we will have a public meeting with the city council. No action is required at this meeting. And then in February, this is a public hearing where the adoption, where we adopt the resolution, you adopt the resolution of formation for this district. And then hopefully in March, April, with everything going according to plan, the new district will begin collecting assessment. Lodging partners and future Yuba Sutter Lodging Association contributors, these are the members who have helped to make this entire process happen. These, these partners have been really amazing and have been incredibly supportive, which we're very lucky to work with them on this. So from Yuba City, Hampton Inn and Suites, Bonanza Inn and Suites, and the Best Western, these are our champions in this effort. These are the people who will make up the Lodging Association Board, along with from Yuba County, Comfort Inn and Suites, as well as Collins Lake. We're still seeking representation from Sutter County and Marysville. If you look at the number of lodging properties on a scale, the majority of our lodging properties are coming from Yuba City and Yuba County. So that's why it's easier to receive support from those properties. Additional Lodging Association members. So this is something that we have worked out. Once this association is created, additional members that will sit on this association will be the contracting agency, as well as representation from Yuba City, Yuba County, Sutter County, Marysville, and any other jurisdictions as far as economic development and/or any other parties who play a role in making sure that tourism is a success in the Yuba Sutter region. And that's it.
Any, any members of council have any questions for Brianna?
Nope.
No? None? And Brianna, before you leave, I just want to say thank you very much for a very well-organized Farm-to-Fork Dinner a couple weeks ago. It's an amazing beginning to bringing even more folks from outside our community to, to the greater Yuba Sutter area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're blessed with her speed, reading, talking abilities. If that was me doing it, we'd have been here still talking about that. Item number six, our planning, building department, building license software presentation, presented by Brian Hansen, our senior IT analyst. Brian, you brought us a live version of this?
No. I know better than to do live demos.
Okay.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am going to give you just a quick sneak peek of our new citizen portal. That's part of the Acela package that we're implementing. Give you a little insight of what it's going to look like and kind of some of the functionality, and then we'll follow that up with an announcement of when we're actually going live. So, to get started, this is kind of a proposed look for the site itself. Working on colors right now. Just a general overview. I'm not going to touch too much on aesthetics right now, more on functionality, but this is just giving you an idea of what it's going to look like. So the main part of the citizen portal is creating a user account, so that people can manage the business they're doing with the city. So here, you have a login, or you can register as a new user. I've already created a registration for myself, so I've logged in here. And I come to my dashboard. You see here, I have my collections. Collections are, basically, I think, like folders. It's basically the work I'm doing with the city. I can organize it myself, so that's easier for me to keep track of it. And you'll notice at the bottom is, I have some work in progress here. So this is an application that's, I'm in the process of submitting, but I haven't fully submitted. So I can start up an application, get, gather some more information, and then restart that application without losing anything. So we're going to go ahead and look at the building section of this. You'll notice on the building section that I have my, my permit that is in progress, that I'm still filling out, and then I have one that is already in the stages of being used and is in the plan review. So you'll notice the status stated right there. So for you, for this, I'm just going to show you a quick application. So up here on the application section, click on that. You're going to get our standard disclaimer. This isn't the exact wording that's going to be, but they'll have to agree to what they're proposing online. Because I set up my account, and I have a contractor license associated with myself, it auto-fills in that contractor information, so I don't have to fill it in every time I submit a permit. And then I got to select my permit type. So it's a little hard to see here, but for this application, I'm doing a solar permit. So I'll just show you some of the details of a solar permit, because those are fairly common. First thing is tying the permit to an address. So the Acela software is tied to our GIS on the backend. So when you fill out an address, it automatically searches the GIS and populates the parcel information and the owner information. So it helps fill in things a lot quicker and keeps things more in line with our existing data. Next is the contact information, the applicant. Again, takes us from the GIS or from my profile on the, on the citizen portal. And again, the licensed professional auto-filled in because it's my account. If I wasn't a licensed professional, I'd be choosing a licensed professional to perform the work there. Now I get to name my application. So I just gave it a really brief rooftop solar install with a description. I'm installing a 50-kilowatt solar system on top of the police department. Police isn't here, so they don't get credit for that. And then because this is a solar permit, this is very hard to see, but basically, all the questions for the permit are associated with a solar permit itself. So it asks the correct question- So it asks the correct questions based off of the type of permit you're filling out. So it makes it a lot easier for the person filling out the permit. And here's where the really important part, this is where you can submit your online plans.
Tell me it's not so, really?
No, really. So right now, I've submitted some construction plans. These can be PDFs, they can be images, they can be AutoCAD files, whatever's needed for the application, they can be attached here without having to bring them in, print them out, and make a trip to City Hall. And the type is determined by the person submitting it, so you get to choose and let the city staff know what type of document you're attaching to your application. And then a quick review just kind of goes over everything that you've filled out to this point. And then your application is submitted. And you have a record number there that's tied to it on the backend and the frontend. So that's your reference for going back and viewing what you've done. And it's for the backend staff to process your application. And then I'll just click on that view records detail. Again, kind of gives you a brief information about the record itself, tells you the record status is submitted, and it has the expiration date, because our permits do have expiration. If you're not acting on a permit, it automatically expires. So a backend staff takes that application, they go over what's going on with it, and they apply some fees to that application based off of the type of permit, where it's being done, some other factors. So you'll click on the payments section here, and that'll show you your fees due. So for this particular permit, the fees outstanding are $3,490. And now you have the option to pay those fees. Paying those fees, click on that, gives you the application fees and gives you a breakdown so you know where that money's going and how much. And then you can continue on with that. And now you have your payment screen that gives you the option to either pay by credit card or by electronic check. Obviously, the city's preference is electronic check, much more efficient on our side, but gives you both opportunities there. Pretty standard if you've done any kind of checkout, any online shopping. And that takes you back to your payments, which now shows that you've actually paid those fees. You can view the details on that fees as well. And you know, it's also that the record status has changed to in plan review. So backend staff has started to process that application, and they're reviewing the documents that you've submitted. So under the record info, you're going to get much more information. And one of them is this processing status. Now, this is very important for the person submitting the application. This allows them to see exactly what's happening with their application, what stage it's in, and who's even working on it. So this one's a completed one, so it's already final, but it gives you an idea of, you know, this one's approved by Sharon. This is issued by Ronaldo, and then inspection was done by Mike Campos. So you can see exactly who's working on it, when they're working on it, and what stages you're at. So again, you don't have to come to City Hall, you don't have to pick up the phone and call anybody. You can review this and keep track of this on your own. Also under the record info is the attachments. Now, you'll see a lot more attachments than what we did with the initial application. You have our construction plans, and then you have email correspondences. Each step of the process, certain aspects of it, have email notifications. So the applicant will get notified when staff does certain things. So when a plan is reviewed and it's approved, the applicant will get the notice that that has been done. But the important thing to notice here is the permit document itself. So if you were to click on that, you can actually get the electronic permit for that application. You can print it out at home. Again, not have to come into the City Hall. And this is just a draft, not final, so this may change the way it looks, but just gives you an idea of what's possible. So that's it in a very brief nutshell. Obviously, there's a lot more things it will do. I didn't touch on business licenses at all, but I just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of some of the capabilities. And just, when can you start using it? That's going to be the question everybody wants to know. January 3rd. So it's the first day that we're back at work, basically, after the holiday break. We'll be providing a link on our website, so users can click on that link, start doing applications, set up a user profile, renew business licenses. All those things will be available January 3rd. And with that, can I answer any questions?
Questions? Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Brian, if you already have a permit in the system, will you be able to access that online? Or do you have to go and set up a profile and then put in that permit number to do that?
Part of the reason for going live on January 3rd is there's actually going to be a break between our old system and our new system. So anything existing in the old system is going to remain in the old system. There'll be some history pulled over for reference for the staff, but users won't be able to see their existing stuff that they've done in the past. It's just too hard to translate that over from one system to the other. We can link up, if you've come to the counter and done a permit and then set up an online account after January 3rd. There are ways to link it up, but it works a lot better if you set up your profile first and initiate those applications and business licenses and stuff through the online portal, because then it's directly tied to your account.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to thank you for getting on this. I know that our mayor here was very adamant that he thought it would be a good idea to get into the 21st century with this. The staff and everybody knew that it was going to be a big task to move this forward. And I know that people had, through the year, come to me and had difficulties with some of these processes that you're talking about, just because coming in and having to wait and discuss, sometimes people are out and even inspecting and just different. So it was very difficult, just everybody being able to meet. And this is going to streamline it very well. And so I know that these people may wish that it was done then, but anything they come in in the future, it will definitely be an easier lift for them to develop or expand their businesses in the way that they would like. So thank you for all the efforts that have been going on and the insistence that was behind it.
I do have to thank the council and city staff for all the encouragement and support. Project definitely wouldn't have gone through without the support of the city manager's office, development services, and finance. The entire departments all have a role to play in this, so lots of support, a lot of buy-in, and a lot of positive things going on.
Well, you know, one thing I want to say, Brian, is you certainly loaded the slingshot and sent this thing downrange, because we are moving from a very cumbersome, difficult, slow, snail-paced process into the current century. And as we continue to perfect this, this is going to be something that will serve our community so much better when it comes to enabling businesses to come here and submit the process in a much more rapid sense, and also give them verifiable dates of when things are going to be moving forward in the process. And certainly, as you depart from here tonight and head to Oakland, I remind you to stay safe, but learn as much as you possibly can from the Code for America group that you're going to be meeting with down there, because that's going to be possibly one of the next big links for our community, is to be able to have an open data portal in which people can help develop some apps and other things to even tie into a process like this. So thank you, and work hard down there. Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
You.
Now, we're going to spend a little bit of your money. Well, we're moving on to bid openings. Item number seven, purchase of seven new police vehicles. And this will be presented by Spencer Morrison, our accounting manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I bring before you a request to award the purchase of seven replacement police vehicles. Each year, fleet maintenance staff reviews the city's vehicles and recommends replacements. They use the age of the vehicle, amount of miles and service hours, and the projected operating cost of the aging vehicle as a basis for the recommendation. Staff is recommending the replacement of five patrol vehicles, aka interceptors, and two detective sedans. Of the vehicles being replaced, six will be sold at auction, and one will remain as a pool vehicle in the fleet. Givicky Ford has agreed to honor the pricing of a bid from November 2015, which was vetted by purchasing staff as competitive. The pricing will be four police interceptors at $31,753.50 each. One police interceptor with, it's more set up for an administrative vehicle, at $28,341.45. And two detective vehicles for $28,010.35 each. The total cost will be $207,964.10 for all seven. Funding for these vehicles was already appropriated in the 2016-17 budget for capital acquisitions and is available in the vehicle replacement fund. And staff recommends that council award the purchase of seven police vehicles to Givicky Ford of Yuba City in the amount of $207,964.10, finding that it is in the best interest of the city to do so. May I answer any questions at this time?
Questions of Spencer? Seeing none, action from the council?
Through the mayor. I'm going to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, the purchase of seven police vehicles from Givicky Ford.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much, Spencer. Seems we got a goodbye on some cop cars. Public communication, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they're called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard under item number nine, that's the appearance of interested citizens. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We'll move on to item number eight, written requests, and we do have one written request. And this is from Mr. Spencer Norman, the Yuba City Gold Miners basketball team. Spencer?
How's everybody going? Good. My name is Spencer Norman. I have a new basketball team here professionally, and these are my players. A little bit about myself, I'm from New York. I was born in New York. And I've been talking to John for about three, four months, fourteen, Ricky. I played 17 years professional basketball, and I just had that vision to give back. I think Yuba City would be a great place to put a team. And I've been talking to Preet as well. And I just want to get some support. We have our first game in two weeks. Having Texas come down and bringing ESPN to Yuba City. This is my assistant coach, Tony White. Everybody knows Tony White. Introduce yourself, guys.
How you guys doing? My name's Monik. Played here, River Valley. I graduated 2012.
What position?
I play point guard, shooting guard, small forward. I'll just put the ball in the hoop, so that's all I'm going to do.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Blake Lavin. I'm a Yuba City native. I went to high school and middle school at Faith Christian High School, K through 12th grade. This is just a great opportunity for all of us to continue our playing careers and gain exposure. And I just want to ask you guys for your support to come out to a game and spread the word. And we appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aaron Deepdellin. I graduated in 2014, and I'm only 20 years old, so I'm trying to find... I'm trying to have everyone there and support us. Hopefully, you guys all can make it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tyler Frye. I graduated UC High School in 2009, point guard, and just looking forward to getting the season started. Looking forward to seeing all you guys there.
I'll be honest, I'm not good at this. But just looking around, I didn't coach mostly, a lot of, Coach your kid, Coach Steve's kid, I know your kid. But this is my 27th season coaching high school basketball, and Spencer approached me and asked me to be his assistant. So it's something new for me, but I love basketball, I love to coach. So just like the players and Spencer said, we hope to see you all out there for your support, and go Gold Miners.
So we have, and I'll leave it to other comments from our members of the council, but we have their schedule up here. And the first game is on the 12th at 7:00 PM over at River Valley High School. I want to make it perfectly clear, we need some fantastic support as they're playing this team from San Antonio, who is coming up, because I have a bet on the outcome of this game, and it is for a beer. If, if, if they win, I have to buy one here for the owner of the team who is traveling here. If the Gold Miners win, I get to travel to San Antonio and drink one on the owner's tab. So that should be fun. I also delayed my departure on a vacation to be able to stay and certainly support this team. I win, because my wife leaves on vacation before me, so I get to stay in town for a little while, so we can get the 12th and 13th games off. Tickets are on sale currently, folks. I'm not here to try to pitch the sale of these, but we certainly need as much community support as we possibly can to bring these players, these excellent players, out onto the floor and show them a little bit of love. And I believe that the first two games, there'll be a patron at random selected for a half-court shot for $100, so they can come out and try to show what they can do from the half-court line. I know Tyler can make it. I know Monik can make it, but we'll see what happens. Monik, you still throwing that hook shot from the half-court, or are you doing that big over? Yeah, there you go. He'll granny it for 100 bucks, he says. But if any winner wants one of the players to shoot it from half-court, they can select one of the players to do that. So it should be a good time. So members of council, if there's anything you guys would like to add, certainly feel free.
I just want to add that, you know, we talk about bringing things for our kids to do and participate. This is a great, great opportunity to put ourselves on the map, do things for our kids, and be participants. Let's go out there and support the team and support our town.
Through the mayor. Spencer, I'd just like to thank you for putting everything on the line here to get this started in our community and just wish you the very best, and I know our team is going to do well here.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Let me just add, I know, coming all the way from New York, and here you are in a wonderful town of Yuba City, and bringing a team. I know that teams such as yours, obviously, you're also looking for sponsorships, because I know you're not traveling in first-class airplanes, you're probably on a bus or cars or however you get to these trips.
Don't break it to those players back there, because they've been told something different.
But I'm sure you're not only looking for fans, but you're, as community support, you're looking probably for sponsorships to help the folks travel, because traveling to Los Angeles and Las Vegas and all these places is going to take money as well.
Right.
And, but no, we'll definitely put the word out and make sure our community comes out and supports, because we're always talking about taking the kids off the streets. And nice to have our local products, our local winners from our schools that were always featured in the papers. Nice to have them come back and get a chance to watch them again in action at a local level again. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And I'm going to leave this at one last little thing, and that is, the ABA has been around for years, and the commissioner of the ABA, Joe Newman, is highly supportive of the Yuba City team, speaks very highly of Spencer, and they have spent time together. And Joe considers this one of those emerging markets that he thinks will be successful. Joe is not unknown to the world of basketball, because he was one of the owners of the Indiana Pacers. So Joe has stepped into a whole new role, and is a commissioner of a league that is 105?
110 teams.
100, it expanded since I last talked to Joe. 110 teams internationally. So this is a big league, and certainly, thank you, Spencer, for bringing this opportunity to our city.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number nine, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on... Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Any member of the public wish to speak to the council? Seeing none, moving... Oh, I'm sorry, Ricky.
I don't know who Footeen was, but I just beat her to the punch, so... I just wanted to take this opportunity real quickly. It's a true pleasure to be able to come up and to recognize the city. This is a different role, but on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, wanted to thank you for the investment in the citizens' portal and that launching, and what it's going to mean for the business community in expediting the planning process and the licensing process. I know that this is new, and just burgeoning in January, but I think that this is going to go a long way to improving our relationship with the business community and affording terrific opportunity to move business here quicker. And so, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you to the city of Yuba City, to the council for the decision to invest in this as an opportunity. I'm so grateful for this investment in our business community.
Thank you for those kind words, Ricky. Moving on to, if there's no other member of the public? See, you have to move quicker than that. Consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar will be considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Any items to be removed by council? Staff? Public?
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Like to move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That'll move us on down to general items. Item number sixteen, annual report from the downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District and proposed levy of annual assessment for 2017. Mr. Darren Gale, our Economic Growth and Public Affairs Director. Darren.
Good evening, Mayor Mucklin and council members. Each year, we have an opportunity of hearing from our Downtown Business Association, and I'm joined up here by their president, Cindy Payne. I also have a couple of their board members, David Holycross, who's actually an associate member, which demonstrates the strength of the DBA. In the report, you'll notice that their budget in membership dues is approximately $28,000, and they receive $5,000 in associate member dues. And then we have Footeen, Halakis Kopriva, who's also from the board. I'm here attending this evening, and I attend the majority, not all, but the majority of the board meetings to represent the city. Tonight, it's the opportunity for Cindy to give a brief presentation about some successes of this past year, and to talk a little bit about this coming year, and then the action of the council is to set a public hearing for December 20th for the assessment of the levy for 2017. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Cindy.
Hi, thank you very much for letting me speak with you tonight. You all know me, Cindy Payne. Give myself a plug, we own Jerry Stereo, forty years in business this year, almost all of it downtown. So I am the president, have been for two years. Our accomplishments have been our strolls. We've had two very successful strolls, our Christmas, annual Christmas stroll, and our annual summer stroll. We also do Thursday night music during the summer. Businesses are open late. This Thursday night, we're going to have a holiday open house, and that we usually have every November. Many of the businesses will be open late till eight or nine o'clock, serving refreshments, different specials, just trying to get everybody to shop local. Also, in December, right after our Christmas stroll, which we hope you all attend, we'll be having the Three Wise Men's Shopping Night. Actually, we hope there's more than three attending, but it'll be Wise Men Shopping Night, trying to get the guys to come out from, when you've come to the holiday open house this Thursday, there'll be wish lists at different businesses, so the wives or significant others can go ahead and fill out a wish list, give it to their husbands, and say, hey, this is what I want, come back on the December 20th, we'll make life easy for you, and you can shop, you know just what you want, we'll have wrapping available for you, trying to get you to come downtown, have fun, go to our different restaurants. We've re-implemented our beautification department a little bit more committee. I was out today talking to different businesses, reminding them about our events this Thursday night, and to clean up in front of you. We want everybody to take responsibility for their own business also. We do appreciate any help we get from the city, but we still have to take care of ourselves. And we just have a wonderful area that you guys have created for us, and any questions?
Any questions of Cindy?
Nope, no questions. Just keep up the good work.
Oh, thank you. We hope you guys come out for our Christmas stroll. We'll have another parade, so we hope you guys participate in that. It's always fun to get our wave going.
We can't miss that.
No, you can't at all.
Unless it's raining really hard.
Eh, still got to show up. Rain or shine, so...
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, thank you. And December twen... And that's December 10th is our Christmas stroll, this Thursday night, holiday open house. Thanks to my fellow board members for coming out. See ya.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions of Mr. Gale? Nope. Action from the council?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation. Staff's recommendation here to adopt the resolution and intention to levy and collect 2017 annual assessments and set a public hearing for December 20th, 2016.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seventeen, professional service agreement with MBK Engineers for a hundred-year base flood elevation map for the Sutter Basin in the vicinity of Yuba City, presented by Diana Langley, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So the purpose of this item is to determine the 100-year base flood elevation for the city's sphere of influence, and the interest of providing the best available information to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, so FEMA, for the future flood insurance rate map update process. For a little bit of background, in November 2014, the city council awarded a contract to MBK Engineers, which Dawn Truith MBK is here tonight in the audience towards the back, to prepare 200-year base flood elevation maps for the city's sphere of influence. The purpose of those maps was to support the urban level of protection process that's required through the state. So separate from the urban level of protection process is FEMA's process for creating the flood insurance rate maps. So when you purchase a home, if you're getting a loan, the insurance agent calls to find out which, if you're in a special hazard area, and if you are, then you would pay a different insurance than you would if you were outside the special hazard area. So the flood insurance rate map becomes the official map of the community. The city's current firm has an effective date of March 1984, so long time ago, many things have changed since then. But on the positive side, FEMA has delayed, you know, remapping the city for all of these years, which has helped us to work with SUBIFCA to put the levy improvements in place, so that when they do remap, those improvements are in place. So it's anticipated with the completion of SUBIFCA's Feather River West Levy Project, FEMA will begin the process to remap the city. So again, it's important to distinguish, why did we prepare 200-year base flood elevation maps that was related to the ULOT process? The 100-year base flood elevation maps would be related to FEMA's process to remap the city. SUBIFCA has prepared preliminary 100-year floodplain maps with the intent of submitting to FEMA. Staff is recommending that we hire MBK to prepare 100-year base flood elevation maps for the city's sphere of influence, and there's a couple reasons for that. MBK, number one, prepared our 200-year base flood elevation maps, so it would provide consistency with those 200-year maps. Number two, they would utilize updated hydrology and advanced hydraulic modeling software that has the potential to change the base flood elevation in the Sutter Basin, so why is this so important? With Yuba City being relatively flat, you have about a one-foot elevation drop per mile. And so, for every inch that you can decrease the base flood elevation map, those are properties that are not being mapped into the 100-year floodplain. And so when you have property owners that are purchasing properties and going to determine whether or not they need flood insurance, inches count significantly in terms of what will be or will not be mapped into the floodplain. So in order to provide the best possible outcome for property owners within the city's sphere of influence, staff recommends contracting with MBK to prepare the 100-year base flood elevation map, with the intent that the city would then submit that to FEMA for mapping of the city. The additional recommendation is to authorize the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation of $80,000 from the levy impact fee that's been collected throughout these years. There's approximately a billion dollars available at this time to fund the mapping. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Diana.
Diana, once we do this, then would these maps be given to SUBIFCA for them to approve, or do their maps can be different than ours, and it doesn't really matter, or?
Their maps could be different than ours. We would provide the information to SUBIFCA, but if it was, if these maps were in the city's favor, as they could potentially be, then we would recommend that our maps be utilized, to be submitted to FEMA for the mapping purposes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No question, but thank you for moving forward with this. Having been a certified floodplain manager with FEMA, as you know, they would, they highly recommend that communities do take this tack, even if other processes are going on with a larger group, to get the fine details, as you're saying, for these areas, because some of the communities, you know, they do, they don't just go slope straight down. There are areas in the city that are higher and lower, and this will give the detail that is needed to best benefit the community and the citizens on their property, so they actually do recommend a higher level, if we're willing to, and for $80,000, that's a bargain.
Any other questions? So seeing no more, I do have a question. So Diana, this expenditure would also benefit either in or out the annexed area that's being referred to as a keyhole?
Yes, because it's currently within the city's sphere of influence.
Okay, so that's an expenditure by the city that would benefit others. Okay.
Correct.
Action from the council?
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Like to move for approval of the item.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we'll move on to item number eighteen, professional services agreement with RMC Water and Environmental for wastewater treatment facilities improvement. Mandy Choohan, our senior engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council members. On the wastewater treatment facility, little bit of history, that facility has been in operation since early 1970s, and it has been in continuous operation 24/7, 365 a day. And the facility has been expanded back in 2005 from its old capacity about approximately seven MGD to 10 and a half MGD, and current average flow of the facility is six and a half MGD per day, and the total solids coming to the facility for treatment are approximately 11,000 pounds per day. So this facility is about 44 years old, and this picture shows the overall overview of the process units, and all of the process units makes the full entire wastewater treatment facility, and for its efficient operation, we'd need to operate every single process unit efficiently for the full treatment. And to rehab this, the aging infrastructure and the old process units, back in June 2nd, 2015, council awarded a professional services agreement to RMC Water and Environment of Walnut Creek to prepare the pre-design report. The pre-design report, the purpose of the pre-design report was to evaluate all the needed process, the needed process units for its condition assessment, and try to evaluate all the possible alternatives, how to move forward for the improvements. Now, the first part of the pre-design report is complete, and that recommendation from the pre-design report is to split the project in two different phases, phase one and phase two, for construction purposes, and all of, both of those phases have been included in our recent rate study as a priority one and priority two projects. And purpose of today's presentation and the recommendation is to move forward with the design of phase one projects. So phase one projects' total estimated cost is approximately $10 to $13 million at a pre-design level, and it will include digester improvements, de-watering improvements, electrical improvements, and bar screen improvements. And phase two project, that we are still trying to find best possible alternatives to move forward for construction. It is estimated to cost from $15 million to $18 million, and that will include new secondary clarifier, and it will also include the relocation of our existing outfall in the Feather River. So this picture shows the process units that are being recommended to move forward for the, during the first phase. So this is just a little bit of a condition assessment of the digester covers, will include the replacement of the covers of the digesters, a lot of rusting, structural integrity is not there. Bar screens, hard to maintain, and so we are going to, with this project, recommendation is to keep the existing bar screens, and to add a new bar screen that we don't need to do a confined space entry. And de-watering system, it is approximately 20-year-old, and it will replace, will be replaced by the new technology, you don't read, ram thickeners on the first floor. And electrical system is really old, aging, and needs replacement for continuous operation of this facility. And the today's recommendation is to award the professional services to RMC Water and Environment to start the design of the first phase of the projects. And then the anticipated next steps for the first phase of the project is, we are anticipating to request authorization from the council to advertise the project for the competitor bids, and then with the anticipated date for award for construction in December 2017, and the construction is to start in spring 2018. And with that, I would recommend item A, B, and C on the staff report.
All right. Questions of Mandy?
Through the mayor, I don't have any questions. I was just commenting to the mayor, I said, it seems like we see these pictures of the electric system that's kind of out of date, we see other stuff that's out of date, and I know if we approve this thing here tonight, it's sadly to say that it's still going to go all the way to 18 to get this thing moving. By the time you get stuff updated, it's going to be outdated again. And is there a reason why it's got to go all the way up to 18? If we're going to, if you guys are going to award this here next month, and why it has to go to 18, why not get started in 17?
Well, we can try to expedite the process, but these are really specialized and complicated projects, and the design takes about three to four months, and then we will have the review, the third-party reviewers to review the constructability of the project, so that we don't have any problems during the process. This is being a retrofit project, is very considered a complex project, so we wanted to be very careful. So we are anticipating that the final design will be complete in May with the final reviews, and we will come back to the council for, to advertise... and we will come back to the council for, to advertise for the bids. And it's about two to three-month process, once we advertise and receive the bids and come back for, so, so at the, at the maximum, I would say that we can expedite maybe by two or three months at the most.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. So.
Actually, I did. You know, the, the cost of plans like this, and I saw that million-dollar plus, and since, so, you know, I get indigestion a little bit when I see numbers that high, for the, for the plans. And so I did some research on the, the company and, and things like that, and there's a few cities in California that are already, currently in the process of utilizing them and some of their history, and found out that this is a first-level, I would call it a tier-level-one quality company to make this happen. So that made me satisfied with that. And then I've also checked a little bit into whether they could be expedited, as it's been asking, and, and they're a kind of a company in quality that they would be able to do this if we were to, you know, to just ask them nicely, or of course, if we were to put a little extra money into it, all of them will do that. I'm not recommending that, but I agree with Councilman Gill that if we can get this accelerated, it'd be appreciated very much, so.
My only comments are, I guess, one question for you, Mandy, and that would be, during the design phase, are we to anticipate possibly them finding other failures that, because this is a design project in a retrofit, could there be other components to this that we may be looking at to build, to bring this retrofit into play?
So for these project process units that we are going to construct the improvements on, complete assessment has been done to find all the possible scenarios of the, of the improvements that we are going to do. So now we know what we are going to do exactly. So this, next in the design phase, the design, the final design ideas has been frozen, and now we are going to make sure that the design, we prepare the design according to the findings, what we want to do. And again, this is a multi-discipline project, will include the structural engineers, include the civil, include electrical instrumentation engineers, include architects. So, so it is a, and RMC is coordinating, and they're also collaborating with the top-notch other subconsultants to, to make this design complete.
Okay.
Yes.
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to approve the professional services agreement with RMC Water and Environment for wastewater treatment facility improvements with items A, B, and C.
Like to second that.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much for your in-depth report once again, Mandy.
Thank you.
Item number 19, presentation of investment report, quarter ended September 30, 2016. Spencer Morrison, floor is all yours.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I bring before you the treasurer's quarterly report for the first fiscal quarter of the year. The portfolio has a market value of, as of September 30, as 99 million, 99.7 million. 98.7 of that is held by the city, and .6, so 600,000 being held in trust with district bonds and such. One point, that's a $1.3 million net increase over the last quarter. Some of the significant cash flow items were debt service payments of 2.2 million, and that did include tax allocation bonds for the successor agency and the final pension obligation bond debt service. Included some sales tax receipts, 1.2 million, and property tax installment of 2.1 million among other items, such as lots of activity with the flood control agency in both expenditures and state reimbursements. The composite, composition of the portfolio is roughly 20% in agency bonds like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and such, about 9% of treasury bonds, 5% of state and municipal bonds, and 14% of corporate bonds, which would bring us to about a little less than half, made up of bonds in the portfolio. And then about 40% is in the local agency investment fund, or LEAF, which is a very liquid place, interest-bearing account to put money into for state and local agencies. And then cash and many money markets and other cash-like investments made up about 12%. Very short report tonight due to the hour.
Any questions? Any questions of Spencer?
Yep, just a comment. It's always nice when you can go up 1.3 million from prior quarter to this quarter, so hopefully we can keep, keep doing that every quarter.
Well, I was surprised by, by what that showed as, as an increase when, when I've heard that there's public comment that the city, Uba City is broke, but I think that's all subject to the rumors being spread through the annexation process, so. Any other questions of?
Nope.
Mr. Morrison?
Great job managing city funds.
Nicely done. Moving on to business from the city council, item number 20, the 2017 city council meeting calendar. This will be being presented by Terrell Locke, our assistant to the city manager. Terrell?
Oh, good evening, Mayor and council members. So this time of year, we always evaluate the calendar for next year to look for any conflicts that arise on the dates, because by ordinance, we are scheduled to have our council meetings on the first and third Tuesday of every month. So evaluating the calendar, we are recommending that January 3, July 4, May 2, August 1 be canceled, and special meetings could be scheduled at any time to do that. May 2 is the cap-to-cap trip to Washington, so if, if the council members decide not to go to that one, then it doesn't need to be canceled, but it's just kind of on the schedule for that now. It, by looking at the calendar in advance, it kind of helps council and staff evaluate when they need to be taking items before you and to scheduling the time that needs to come up. We're also, August 1 is the national night out. It's always the first Tuesday of August, and so we usually cancel the council meeting at that time, and, because council really has a, a good national night out event, attending that always. So there's also a couple of proposed workshops. We use, we always have a, the council priorities and goals workshop, and we're going to ask to move that up to January 31 this year. And then we also have the budget study session on May 24, and then proposed workshops for development services projects in January and February. So if you have any other suggestions or any times that may not work, I mean, of course, you could take this up later, because this is like, it's hard to decide what we need to do in November of 2017, or 16, what we might need to do in November 2017.
I don't know. I think we're all big planners, so, so the, the schedule out in front of us is not, nothing new. It's, it's what we see on a ongoing basis throughout the, the year, and I would certainly let the public know that, that this council meets substantially more than it, it does as its minimum requirements of, of every, on the, on the first and, and third Tuesdays, as there are always going to be special workshops and different things going on in our community in which we are involved, and certainly council, the council is, is involved in, in each one of those. So action from council?
So moved, I'm going to make a motion to council these meetings that are dated in staff's recommendation.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for moving us into some open territory there. Item number 21, city council reports. Council member Dipple.
Hey, just a couple of things. We had a very, very short LAFCO meeting, just basically going over canceling one meeting and having a special meeting now that we have a new executive director, so we'll be touching base with him in our next meeting. So it was just a very short meeting to go ahead and get that scheduled. Other than that, we had the celebration of the phase one of the Bridge Street corridor, which was a great event. It's also the kickoff to the Fifth Street Bridge replacement project. Had a great turnout, wonderful, wonderful event out there, so it was nice to get everybody there and celebrate. The other was the Sister City delegation. The Toray Japan folks arrived, and we had the welcoming ceremony outside of City Hall. They are enjoying their week in, in Uba City right now, so we'll see them one of these evenings for our dinner. Other than that, that was it. Very small.
All right, thank you, and moving to council member Dukes.
Have just a couple of items to report. First, today chose Megan Grima to be our representative for the Citizens Advisory Board for the Sutter Beat Flood Control Agency, as Mike Morris has stepped up to be on Levy District Nine's board, so he couldn't be on, on both. So he now has, officially has a replacement. And last week attended the fall meeting for the Mosquito Vector Association of California, and I was elected as the vice president of the State Trustee Board for the Mosquito Vector District. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to council member Cash Gill. Hey, this could be your last report.
Yes, actually, it is my last.
What was your last report?
It is our last official city council report for council members, because I think tomorrow's just a ceremonial meeting to honor one of our local pioneers of our community tomorrow night. We did attend the Pluma Street Phase One. It's nice to see that we'll be beginning on our bridge to Marysville, and I think like Bob Barkhouse said, a former mayor, council member, this bridge is actually to somewhere. And it is a bridge into Marysville. I know a lot of the people, including ourselves, we wanted a third bridge, but I guess to get four lanes into Marysville and get four lanes all the way to Highway 99 is better than two lanes and, you know, bottlenecks in between. So that's, that's going to be a nice project once finally completed. Where's Mr. Darren Gill? Darren Gill, thank you, and congratulations to you and the Rotary Club of Uba City, the City of Uba City, for stepping up and inaugurating this Japanese garden for an area that was kind of wasted, I guess you could say, but now it looks beautiful, it's lit up. I drove by, pulled in at nighttime, it looks even prettier at night. For 28 years with the Toray City, our sister city, that's 28 years for them coming here, it's 27 years for us going over there, and it's nice to see some of the same folks come back and forth for us. And I had the honor to represent the City of Uba City on 25 years when I went back, and the hospitality that the Japanese folks show us is unbelievable. And to stay with them at their houses, and, and they take us around, show us around, is unbelievable, so thanks to all of the delegation that's here and enjoying our City of Uba City. Tomorrow night, we do have a special council meeting representing, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but, I don't know if you had it or not, but honoring, I'll just keep it real short, so I'll leave it up to you, honoring Dedar Baines, Dedar Singh Baines, who was a world seek leader, one of the pioneers for not only this community, but the entire world, who's well-known, more well-known probably outside of Uba City than he is in Uba City, so that's tomorrow night. So with that, it's been a great honor, a great pleasure representing the City of Uba City for eight years, and enjoyed my time, so I'll keep the rest of the comments for December 2 or December 3, whenever our final, final meeting is, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and moving on to Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Well, first of all, I attended the Uba-Sutter Transit Meeting, and very little major changes or events on that, but continually trying to improve the services that are provided in our area, except that we did have a card, the new, what is that called?
Connect card.
Yeah, yeah, card you can use, and it actually works for Sacramento and for us, and so where that is actually kicking off, and so they're giving out a few of them for people to test and see if, how well it works or, to that connect card. Thank you. And I remember when that started five years ago, when I was at the county and they first started talking about it, so five years, we're finally, we're finally there. But, you know, getting those connections between other communities and how their systems work can be difficult. Also attended the Bridge Street Project Dedication. That was a fantastic event. I've heard about this for the last 25, 27, 28 years, that Bridge Street getting widened and things, and I think we've shown how serious we are by removing the homes that we, as we buy them, or they become vacant, to where that project will be completed. We're very serious about it and, and making something great for our community. Also, the Toray Day delegation, I wasn't able to attend, but I do hope to be a representative next year in February in Japan. Usually we tried to host a fam, or somebody, this year just too busy and was not able to do that, so looking forward to that experience again.
All right. All right, I'm not going to beat this, this horse too far, but the Bridge Street project, it was amazing to have the represent, the representation there of not only this council, but prior members, member, mayors, the visionaries that years ago saw the potential of a project and just the continuity of process, and certainly to Diana with her staff as they've moved this project forward. And the funding for that project comes primarily from the federal government. Our congressman, Garen Mendy, was there, and, and then we also have some of the, of the SAOCOG funding, and so our local match on any of this is pretty minute compared to the size. A $70 million project to replace a, an outdated bridge that was built post-1955 flood and bringing a 200-year flood-level protected structure to raise it above the floodplain, and certainly to increase even in the event of emergencies. What a lot of people don't understand is the, and again, I harp on this, the Fifth Street Bridge is not accessible in a high-water event. There is a coffer dam put in place on the Marysville side because the Mary, it cuts through the top of the levee, and it's required to be in place to protect the City of Marysville. So this, this bridge will actually allow traffic in the event of an emergency to have ingress and egress from that area or into and out of that area, and certainly that is where our only medical facility of any significance is available 24 hours per day, and that is the Ride Out Hospital that is newly opening and will have a very high level of trauma care for our area. We completed phase one. That was part of this celebration. Moving on to phase two was, was certainly another large component, but as we move into phases three and four down the road, it will open a corridor into the heart of Uba City and allow for access to a greater amount of commercial properties, certainly into a very beautiful and well-developed downtown, and also spreading into the Plumas Boulevard component, which is primarily our medical complexes in, in Uba City. But I think we'll allow for a tremendous amount of expansion along that corridor, and certainly we look forward to having a remarkable boulevard that will probably handle, could potentially in the, in the future, handle more than 30,000 daily vehicle trips. It could match what, what occurs on Calusa Avenue with fewer restrictions along the boulevard. So, so we're looking forward. So, so we're looking forward to that. The Toray Japan delegation showed up in tow, sixty, I believe it's sixteen youth. I didn't count all their heads, but it, I, I think it was like sixteen youth. And they are enjoying our community. Certainly the highlight of why they come at this time of the year is Halloween. And they had a blast yesterday. It's been kind of going on all weekend. They retreated to a, to a zombie group on Sunday night. They have really grasped the opportunity to engage with their families and learn more about our educational system. And certainly the cultural exchange is going along very, very smooth. Cash and I had the honor of going to the Mayor's Cup. Well, I was kind of required to be there. It didn't rain the first half. It was, it was a remarkable game. It was very, very close in, in the first half. It was a hard-fought, tremendously punishing football game. And it was played over at RV. And as the rain began in the second half, Cash made me stick around. And, and the injuries mounted and yet the, the players showed great sportsmanship through that, through that game. And honored each other, especially by knocking somebody down and reaching down and picking them up at the end of a play. And it, it was a lot of fun to, to watch these guys really work hard and, and certainly be cheered on by a, a group of young ladies on the sideline that tried to keep all the spirits up even when, when RV took a little bit of a slump in that, in that second half. But it was a lot of fun. Tomorrow, we're, we have the honor of, of having Dedar Baines here with us. And we are going to have a reception right out here. Should the weather continue to hold out and follow, that's at five o'clock. And everyone is welcome to come to that. Dedar is, you talk about another visionary of, of a community when he arrived in this country with little and through family was able to build what he has built. And my involvement with Dedar was prior to becoming a, a police officer in nineteen seventy-nine. But I, I got to start working alongside of him in nineteen eighty with the very first Sikh parade that was attended by an amazing three hundred people. His vision for that was to grow culturally, the Sikh community's integration in our community with a celebration that would continue on for years. And it has done just that. Not only that, but I will tell you that Dedar changed in nineteen eighty-four was one of those instrumental members that changed the face of the world. Everything that transpired in nineteen eighty-four in India was, was certainly felt here. And having a strong leader as Dedar certainly changed a tremendous amount in, in that region of, of India. And again, I feel honored to build to, to ask him to come here. So we can recognize him for his many years of dedication and growth of our community and certainly building a cultural bridge here in this community that, that has allowed the Sikh community to flourish. So with that, that is tomorrow night, five o'clock, six o'clock, there's a special council meeting to recognize him. And once again, everybody is, is welcome to attend. We are going to adjourn to closed session. And in that process, any member of the public wishing to address the city council on any item listed in the closed session agenda will have the opportunity to present testimony to the city council prior to the city council convening into closed session. Comments from the public will be limited to three minutes. No member of the public will be allowed to present once the city council convenes into closed session. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this council regarding the items listed on the closed session agenda? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much.